Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Holland City Council for January four, two thousand and twenty-three. We're getting started a couple of minutes late because we had a very active coffee with council this evening. So thank you to all of those folks that came. And remember, we've got another opportunity on Saturday morning at nine AM at the Civic Center. So I just wanted to put that out there for those folks who may not have had an opportunity to chat with us. But I would like to call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Present.
Freeman.
Present.
Peters.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Coronado.
Here.
Aaron Sors.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a corn.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kathy. We're going to begin the meeting this evening as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you are so inclined.
Please pray with me if you're so inclined. Lord, thank you for a new year, a new beginning, new opportunities. Time is sometimes seen as a circle revolving once every three hundred and sixty-five days. Gives us the opportunity to make new plans, set new goals, shed old habits, create new good ones. Lord, give us good habits. Lord, thank you again for the opportunity to serve, to do your work for the people of Holland. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next items on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and in most cases have been previously reviewed by council. I just wanted to make a special note that there is an item that has been added to the consent agenda. It was a late add just today. That is item four F. It is a fairly routine matter, but we just wanted to make that point to folks that that was not part of the original agenda packet, but it is was made available prior to the meeting. But these items will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the audience or a member of council asked to have an item removed from the consent agenda, and then it will be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask the public or the council if they'd like to remove any items, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Four B, approval of minutes, December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting. Four C, Ose of Office. Four D, approved quote for electrical upgrades to transportation building to support electric vehicle charging stations. Four E, West Michigan Enforcement Team Burn Justice Assistant Grant approval, October one, two thousand and twenty-two through September thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. Four F, adopt a letter of intent to accept Resilient Lake Shore Heritage Grant. Four G, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Strategic Plan and Business Plan Quarterly Progress Update, October through December, two thousand and twenty-two. Four H, award bid of first-floor finance office renovation.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Is there any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either, I would entertain a motion to approve or to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Moved by Hookstra. Is there support?
Support.
Support by, we'll give that one to Freeman this evening. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Peters. Corbin. Coronado.
Yes.
Aaron Sors.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to be able to address a council under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Michigan. All of our meetings are held in public, all our deliberations are in public, and we provide the opportunity for the public to address us at each and every one of our meetings. We do have some guidelines and some rules that we follow here. One is that each person is limited to five minutes. You may speak on any subject that you would like to, but it is one-way communication. We don't answer questions during this time or engage in discussion during this time. And you'll notice that there are three lights on the dais that will help you with your timing. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means that you are doing well on time. The yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. When you approach the podium, please state your name and the municipality in which you live. Now, having said that, is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson Zeeland. Happy New Year, a fresh start. Can we think and imagine excitedly of how we will progress in two thousand and twenty-three? In teaching, we were trained to skillfully manage our times with the children by the term monitor and address and adjust. My lesson plans were always done in pencil because the receptibility of the children was really the driving force in reaching the goals of learning. I would like to entertain the idea of monitoring and adjusting due to the recent events in Holland. I am requesting that you examine your DEI ordinance. You said it was legally tight and secure in two thousand and twenty. You did this because the previous ordinance did not include the long-awaited needs of Holland is Ready LGBT Organization. You believe you did that, we believe you did this in good conscience. Councilwomen Arden Horse and Raymond and Councilman Vierman were not here when the DEI ordinance was passed. You do not know the drama and pressuring testimonies that took place. I do. You are now encouraged to trust the word of Mayor Box, the city manager and lawyer. You are confident to stand unified in the decisions that were made in the past. But things have changed, and many outward forces are not not foreseen in two thousand and twenty have erupted. A strong animosity has developed against another people group mentioned in the ordinance. It is a nationwide campaign. The DEI laws are directed to impede our constitutional religious speech freedoms. Before Thanksgiving, a nasty threatening Facebook post hit the Internet inviting a protest against Focus on the Family Christian Bookstore with accusations of fear-mongering, harmful conversion therapy of for LGBT behavior. This post also slandered and implicated a duly-elected Michigan representative from Holland. Thankfully, the authorities helped contain the demonstration. Did any of you stop in to see if the employees were okay? They were shaken and fearful, as you can imagine. Focus on the Family requested Family Central Bookstore close at five o'clock to ensure the employees' safety. Harassing words are destructive. This is a public accommodation mentioned in your DEI ordinance, and their operations were obstructed. This is a financial hit to the employees and the general sales of the stores, and the public was denied access. This what spurred the protest was an individual who was empowered by your DEI. He says so. Sexual orientation is only the only definition in the ordinance. This was affirmed and encouraged, a clout of aggressive behavior against those who dare to express their biblical values of marriage and sacredness of sex behavior. A quick recall of the last three years. Holland's DEI ordinance Pride Month, intimidation of residents at American House senior facilities. Pride Month boldly displayed now in our libraries, museums, college businesses, and parks. Two thousand and nineteen, a drag show in our civic center. Holland sees the escalating and has not forgotten. Last straw, children being encouraged to believe their sexual behavior is essential. They are taught their physical identity is not what they actually are. These children are behind academically, carry COVID mask trauma, suffered abuse because of the shutdown. They are now unhinged for the secure the security of family values with the DEI mentality. Councilman Hookstra commented, we do not legislate legislate morality. We are not talking about judging adult sexual activities or wrong right or wrong. We are talking about the legislative ordinance that has brought discrimination, fear, silencing, expressing, and now loss of wages and commerce to another group who claim they are securely protected. Many of you are Christians, yet because your children are supposedly safe, you can emotionally detach. As a government body, you are responsible for children and families in Holland. Revis it to clearly secure protection for all people, a quote. When people blatantly see injustice and do not become angry enough to do something, they are the immoral ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, my name is Doug Zialstra from one fifty-two East Twenty-four Street and the Ottawa County Commissioner for the City of Holland. Yesterday was a tough day for me in Ottawa County. To have happened at our board meeting, what happened and how it happened is both disappointing and irresponsible. Ottawa County residents have long counted unstable, efficient local government that offers high-quality services to its residents at affordable villages. And over the last years, they've appreciated the work that their county can do to make this community a welcoming, inclusive one as well. I'm afraid yesterday's events have taken us a ways from that. However, events are not people. Board actions are only actions of that board, not the entire community, which they are only a part. I encourage those who are discouraged today to seek better answers than we were given yesterday, better solutions to the problems that confront us than what we were shown. Ottawa County has filled its many great assets, its people, its parks and public spaces, its diverse traditions and love for this community and one another, that I'm sure yesterday's actions are not permanent roadblocks, but only temporary setbacks to a better place where each one of us belong. Thank you for your time, and as always, please reach out at dsialstra@myodaw.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Rebecca Skipper, and I live in the city of Holland. Hi, my name is Rebecca Skipper, and on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, we would like to extend an invitation to all of you, council members and community members, to attend this year's Navigating Difficult Conversation series. This year's navigating difficult conversations is entitled Humility: The Quiet Power of an Ancient Virtue. Did you know that most people value humility in a potential life partner over all other features of personality? Or that humble leaders produce the best outcomes for their employees? Or that humility is one of the keys to bridging the divide that has formed between so many of us in our community? Perhaps now, more than ever, we recognize the need for greater respect and grace toward one another as we live in a community where there are differences in every area of life. We recognize that having the courage to speak up is important, but just as important and vital is the listening spirit of humility. Local expert matter, local subject matter expert, Professor Darrell Van Tongren, will be leading this two-part series on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth and January thirty-first from six-thirty to eight PM. Dr. Van Tongren is an associate professor of psychology at Hope College and associate editor of the Journal of Positive Psychology. Dr. Van Tongren is a leading researcher in the science of humility and published a book in two thousand and twenty-two entitled Humble: Free Yourself From the Traps of a Narcissistic World, which you can purchase at Reader's World Downtown. He is the author of over two hundred scholarly articles and chapters and a book on finding meaning in suffering entitled The Courage to Suffer. His work is supported by numerous grants from the John Templeton Foundation and has been covered by the New York Times, the Washington Post, and the Chicago Tribune, among other media outlets. Our first part of the conversation will be held on January twenty-fourth and will be virtual, and will define humility, explain its benefits, and address questions such as, what are the myths surrounding humility, and why do we really need humility? Attendees of this session will walk away with an understanding of the latest research on humility and the benefits of humility on their own lives. The second part of this conversation, intended to be a part that is really interactive, will be in person at Herick District Library, and will focus on the practical ways to develop humility. Dr. Van Tongren will provide tools for cultivating humility and discuss real-world implications of building humility within ourselves. Participants will have the opportunity to start putting into practice some of the suggestions from session one. We hope that all of you will take the opportunity to attend this this conversation, and will encourage your fellow community members to join as well. We believe that this is a really important conversation, especially as we reflect on where we are right now as a county and as a city. Humility is key to bridging so many of those divides. Thank you so much. If you would like to read to register, please reach out to Esther Fafowski. She'll register each of you as she so diligently does all of that different kinds of work. Or you can soon register online at the Human Relations Commission's website on the City of Holland's website. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda is item number nine, written petitions and communications. These are taken as emails that we receive in between our regular meetings, and I've forgotten, and I don't have an electronic agenda. Do we have any this evening? Thank you for, thank you for that. I forgot my computer tonight. So when we do receive them, we don't read them out loud, but we accept them into the record, and we do not have any this evening. But I do want the public to know that you can reach us not only by coming here and speaking to us directly or coming to our coffees with council, but you can email us at any time at publiccomment@cityofholland.com. That's publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Next item on our agenda is item six point one, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Parks and Recreation, Sal Perez Youth Scholarship Fund deduction employee reporting dates, July two thousand and twenty-two through December two thousand and twenty-two, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Cash receipts reporting dates, December twelve, two thousand and twenty-two through January one, two thousand and twenty-three. Downtown Group, Windmell Island Gardens, donation boxes totaling one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. Public Safety Services, Fire Division, Education Programs, McAtawa Park Cottageers Association, five hundred dollars. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Moved to approve said gifts with a token of our appreciation.
Moved by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Sors. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item six point two, human resources, Public Safety Command Division Municipal Employees Retirement System, or MERS, Deferred Retirement Option Program, or DROP. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and members of the public. That's a, on your screen right now, it's, that's a pretty long intro description. It's all spelled out. For those of you on council, I promise that I won't go through the entire PowerPoint presentation that you all had to smiling suffer through a couple weeks ago. But really, that's just a encouragement for all of you, but also a reminder for the public that this is not a new topic. In fact, and I am going to use the PowerPoint's presentation a little bit, let's talk about the, that, there's two actions that we're recommending tonight, and let's talk about why we're recommending those actions. We had have succession concerns within our public safety department, especially the command. We're really dating back because of a COPS federal grant many years ago. We have five command staff members that would all retire within two and a half years of each other. And as we've described to you, and as has been one of your priorities for, I think it's three years now, we didn't think that that was probably a very good plan. It was the antithesis of a succession plan. So we first really dug into this and made a presentation to you, as you can see, in March of two thousand and twenty. And there you see the dates that otherwise we really would be faced with these personnel all retiring very quickly after each other. So what we talked about, I'm not going to go through these initial options, but we built our way towards in May twenty-five of, now I can say last year, two thousand and twenty-two, we talked about that we were able to, quite frankly, successfully advocate with the Michigan Employer Retirement System for a different type of a drop program, which is basically a program that puts in place that allows a retiree that otherwise would have maxed out their retirement benefit. And if they continued to work at that point, they wouldn't be generating any additional retirement value. So there really is a large disincentive to continue to work, quite frankly. We were able to advocate for where MERS adopt adopted a different type of drop system that we could enroll in. And that is the first recommendation tonight, that you actually would authorize the city just for this group. It's a division in terminology or language, be a division of five positions, not just employees, but positions, would be eligible for this specific type of drop program. And we talked about that in May of two thousand and twenty-two, and but we identified that that was only one portion of the program that we needed to do. So a couple weeks ago, December fourteen, really the update and recommendation that we took a large amount of time going through is review and confirming with all of you the why of why we're doing this. And the why of why we're doing this was very clearly to address the leadership succession vacuum that we had, which would put the department and the city and, we believe, the the community in a less than advantageous position. Then we outlined the hows of the recommendation, not only the the MERS portion of it, but also the supplemental compensation component, which I'll outline here in a second, and then that we would need two approvals from you. At that study session, recall that, as we quite often do, we're looking for, we go into great detail with all of you and looking for if it meets your approval or if you have any questions. And it seemed pretty clear that night that you all gave us direction to go ahead and bring you these recommendations this evening. So again, this talks about why we're proposing this. It extends those retirements that otherwise would have happened out further, and it spaces that timing out. What we didn't want to do is have a succession plan that just extended it, but they'd all still retire basically within a short period of time. So it really provides a true succession plan. So that first approval that's on your agenda tonight would basically be to adopt this new MERS Deferred Retirement Option Program, thus the acronym DROP, and it would only be for the Public Safety Command Division, and that this, if you would approve that tonight, would put this in place with MERS effective here this month. There's a report in your packet, I think it was actually with the second item, but we definitely wanted to confirm administratively, and that's outlined in that report, that the consultant that we hired really made sure that the the barrier that we ran into here was that we were not otherwise able to do a more traditional drop program because we, and I think you made exactly the right decision in this or prior councils, we had took out a pension obligation bond. And that bond had some state requirements attached to it that we would not change the retirements in this DB program if it increased our unfunded liability. And that unfunded liability then required for the benefit of these employees when they enter the drop period. And remember, we talked about that. I can describe that more if anyone has a question. When they're in that drop period, they would not be able to otherwise receive the full amount of benefit that they otherwise would get if they fully retired. So what we did is we dialed back that benefit that would accrue into an account that's held for them, that would only be received when they fully retire. We had to dial that back where it was only fifty percent of what they would otherwise get. We've confirmed through that report, and it's in that report, that everything, the way that we've outlined it, passes what I'll call muster with the state and with MERS, and that we are doing everything in the way that we need to, to make sure that we don't cause any administrative problems with that state legislation or with our pension obligation bonds. The approval number two, then, that you have on your agenda tonight is to adopt and really to authorize myself as city manager and the larger team in HR and finance to implement this supplemental compensation plan, which again would only be for this division of employees and only when they enroll in this drop program. And again, the and only when they both maxed out their benefit and are age-eligible for the drop program. And why are those additional clauses important? Because what it guarantees is that it keeps it cost-neutral for the city. And in fact, you'll recall way back three, four years ago, when we first analyzed this and took a look at it, you know, when you're dealing with actuarial tables and hypothetical situations, it's really hard to drill into exactly what the ultimate conclusion would be, quite frankly, when you close a DB plan decades from now. But our consultant did confirm that when they took a look at the methodologies that we looked at, that not only is this, we feel cost-neutral, that quite frankly, it saves the city and the taxpayers money by implementing this program, while at the same time it succeeds in getting a succession plan that we think is is definitely advantageous to the city, the department, and our citizens. So again, I, we can go through all of this, I'm happy to, but because we spent a significant amount of time going through this with council, really the conclusion is this achieves our why, that you've had as a goal of council for many years. It satisfies all those state legislation issues, and that basically this is a cost-neutral proposal. I would like to specifically thank, but also identify, members of the team that did a significant amount of work on this, and that would include our HR Director, Jen Orm, and our Fiscal Services Director, Lynn McCammon, and he's hiding from me behind the TV screen in my vision here, but also our Public Safety Director, Matt Messers, here also. This was absolutely a team effort. I think I described in the study session in previous times that we've had this discussion in public session, that we weren't sure we would, quite frankly, get there from here. There were quite a few bureaucratic hurdles that I won't bore you with, but we're very pleased with the outcome that we get here. And again, we think this delivers the end product and the why of why we're doing this in the first place. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. The team is also here that could answer any questions that you might have. But again, what you have in front of you, just to be clear, is actually two separate actions that I would actions that I would strongly suggest really need to be adopted or not in partnership with each other, because they will work together to really achieve what we're recommending. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Quincy?
I don't have a question. One of them will be a question, but comments. Really, I didn't, I don't remember what the breakdown of years is for the retirement of that small group of years, how many years is it that of experience that we would be losing?
Chief, can you help me with that? It's it kind of exposes how old you all are, but.
Thirty times five, 140 to 150.
That's pretty big.
And Quincy, you want to repeat that into the microphone, because people at home, I'm sure, did not hear the chief.
Yeah, chief said that that's 100 and, did you say 200?
We're not that old, Quincy.
No, I'd say between 24 years of experience and 32 years of experience. So if you average that, maybe 26 times five, so it's it's 100 and 140, 150 years of experience between the five of us.
That is, that's something no business could withstand, I don't think, at that level of leadership. So I think this is a something very much needed, and I am in support of it. One of the things also, because this presentation that you presented tonight was even shorter than the one that we received before, and the one before wasn't super short. It was, it took an hour or so to go through it, a little over an hour, right? And this one's muted almost. So we seen the timeline that you presented of when you presented everything to council, because what I don't want to get lost in this is all the work that went into it. It wasn't just, boom, we got this and we figured it out. There was a lot of legwork, a lot of time. This is has been in the works for a few years. So could you go over that slide just to present all the work that's gone into this?
So I'm going to go back and see if. I'm going to go back and see if I have the one slide that has it all laid out, Quincy. And if not verbally, I'll let you know.
All right, that'll work. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No worries. Yeah, I don't think we have a slide that talks about it, but each slide, we, chief, I think the first conversation we had about this was in 2018 with with the full council. And then we made presentations on it, basically what I pulled out of the PowerPoint presentation, which by the way, this entire, the long version of the PowerPoint presentation is available to the public, it's in the supporting documentation for presentations for these meetings. But there was a presentation in 2002, in 2020, 2022, and then late December 14 of '22, and then hopefully action this evening. Does that answer your question, Quincy?
It does. And again, I know this, but I just want everyone to be aware, again, of all the work that's gone into this, even though, you know, we're presenting this and it's only been a few minutes that we go over this, but there's been a lot of, a lot of heavy lifting done already to get us to this point.
Could you go over, sorry, could you go over how this solves for the other problem, which was who's going to move into those positions? I think that was another concern, and this solves for that, too. Could you review that?
Yeah, a couple of things, because that's a great question, and I think it's very worthwhile to describe that for everyone, right? What we didn't want to do, which I said briefly earlier, is we didn't want to just say, okay, everyone can stay longer, but then they all kind of still retire in a very tight time window. So one of the things that, quite frankly, was an expectation for the chief and for these five individuals, is that they come up with a way that they will stagger the retirement so that it extends over a longer period of time. And they've provided that to me. And what it does is what it allows for is that as we proceed, there will be people theoretically in the department, or, you know, when we have positions open, we make those available, right? So different people can compete for those jobs. But what it allows is that people can move into some of these positions when some of the people on this list retire earlier rather than later. And what it allows those people to move in those positions to do is to be surrounded by and be trained by and maybe move into some of these different captain positions to gain that experience with other people that have the 130 years of experience so that they can have the seasoning to be prepared to then, when the next person comes aboard, they can help train that person, too. And quite frankly, there's a good chance, right, that the next chief will be from one of the captains that has some time to be trained in the same way. So that is part of the background plan, if you would, where there will be that time for people to move into these positions, get some seasoning before they can help season more people that move into the positions, and then ultimately someone that takes Chief Messers' position.
Any other questions, comments from council members?
Yes, I do, and I had asked this before of you, chief. So we have the work, the foresight that went into this thinking a while ago, as you brought out, Quincy. In the report, it says, "We understand the city believes its best approach to succession planning is for these employees to continue their work, and extending the MERS drop to these employees would be a potential solution." And, which is the incentivizing them and with this drop program. So that's great, and I believe, I think the the report did a good job, I think everyone has done a good job, and I need to know, so you want to do this? I want to make sure that the employees actually do want to do this. There's a retirement on the horizon. You want to retire, are you, you like to work, if this is a calling? I mean, this is, I mean, this is the the other component to the official and all the numbers.
Sure, absolutely. We were kind of waiting on this first captain, who was, as you see, was scheduled to retire this February, like next month. So we were kind of waiting on to see if he was interested in this, and he has announced that he is interested in this. So he will be taking that, we don't know the exact time, he needs to make that announcement to human or human resources here in the next few weeks, I guess. But yeah, we sat down as a group, we discussed this. I think I can speak for all the Command Staff, including myself. We love it here, we love working here, we love the community, we love the support. We don't want to go anywhere else, we don't want to work anywhere else, we want to stay here, and we're committed to it, we're dedicated to it, and we're glad to have this opportunity. And I think we'll we'll all exercise and use this in some form or fashion, for sure. Unless, like I said, unless there's some unfortunate event that occurs, you could have health issues, you could have family issues, there's nothing for certain, but as of right now, if you were to ask all of us, we would all say yes.
Thank you, that's a great response.
I'd like to add to that, because I think it brings some context to this also for anyone that might be viewing. You know, the reality of what happens if this wasn't in place, and it's kind of crazy how this happens in the larger, what I'll call the system, is that people retire from one community after they've learned that community, and they've learned that culture, and they've helped train in that culture. What they do is they retire from one community, and they go and they take a leadership position, basically doing the same thing in a different community. And then to make it weirder, the people from that community who've maxed out their retirement retire from that community, and then they come and they work in our community, because you've got this larger system that is, quite frankly, like, that doesn't make much sense, right? So I think supplement that with what you heard the chief just say and represent for the four other individuals in these positions. We think this capitalizes on the experience and the love that they have for this organization and this community, so they can continue to serve in that way.
Any other questions, comments from council members? Seeing none, let's take these one at a time. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 6.2, the Public Safety Command Division Municipal Employees Retirement Systems Differral Retirement Option Program, creating the drop program?
Motion support item 6.2 as read.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Freeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. I just wanted Mr. Van Bie to give you the opportunity, anything you wanted to add in regard to item 6.3? Good, I figured you'd covered both of them before, I just wanted to give you that opportunity. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 6.3, the Public Safety Command Division Supplemental Compensation Plan Approval?
So moved as read, 6.3 as read.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? I saved my comments on this for now, I've, this is one of the first issues that that was presented to me when I became mayor as, hey, there's this problem looming that we need to figure out a way to be able to solve. And not a problem that was of our own creation, but kind of a unique situation where we had a bunch of officers hired all at the same time who rose through the ranks together, who are all, as was said tonight, going to retire at about the same time. Wasn't a failure of planning on our part, it's just kind of the way that 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 system worked out for us. And as the city managers just said, was was also the product of kind of an odd, unique, weird bureaucratic system that said, you can't stay here and work anymore, it's not financially beneficial for you to do that, but you can go to another community, and you can work in that other community and continue working there, which simply does not make sense from a leadership standpoint, from a continuity standpoint, or from an economic standpoint, because we would be paying retirement to somebody who's working in another community, and then paying somebody else to work in our community in that same position, who might be a good employee but didn't have the the history that was there. But we were we were trapped in this statewide bureaucratic system, the Michigan Employees Retirement System, and weren't, there wasn't an option for us to be able to deal with. And I I really want to thank staff, both the the Human Resources Staff, the Financial Staff, Keith, you and your office, and Chief, you and your officers as well, as coming together and going, we we think we can figure out a way to be able to solve this problem. And it wasn't that you just created a problem here, you had to go to Lansing and sell this in Lansing. And as you've said to me multiple times, you actually went to a MERS meeting and kind of surprised them, because nobody ever shows up at MERS meetings. And you went there and pitched this program to them and sold this program to them and got the state to adopt a new way of being able to deal with things that will help with this relatively unique problem that we have here in the city of Holland, and other communities may be able to take advantage of that as well. And I think that that, as as Mr. Bird said, there's a lot of work that went into this, but there was an awful lot of smarts, an awful lot of thinking, and an awful lot of collaboration between departments in this community to work together to provide a better option for the people of the city of Holland, for one of the most important things that we do. I'm going to echo the ghost of Mike Trethuie and say, public safety is one of the most important, if not the most important thing that we do here, and we need to make sure that we do it well, and we do it right, and we do, but we need to make sure we continue that as well. So kudos and my applause for doing that. And I also want to give a special thanks to the the Command Staff, because as Council Member Arnshorst said, retirement's on the on the horizon. You know, I know if if my retirement were in in a month, and somebody said, hey, would you be interested in maybe staying longer? That's a hard decision to make, and we got five people who have agreed to work together to stagger retirements that were on the close horizon, to be able to provide for a better transition plan for the people of this community, so that we can get people trained up and ready to fill those positions as well as they have been, they have been done in the past. And the magic of all of this, that I don't want to get, anybody get lost, this is cost-neutral. This is not costing the taxpayers of the city of of Holland a single dollar more than we would have paid before, and quite possibly could be saving us money in this process. So we've got a staff that work together to solve a unique problem, to go to the state, to pitch it, agree to stay longer and serve the people of this community that they love, and it's cost-neutral. I cannot imagine a better solution for an incredibly difficult problem that you guys have been working on for four years. So my thanks to you. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda, communications from the city manager. It's kind of early tonight.
And I'm going to try to keep it early. So just two quick things, because we might have a long week next week. Next week is the video week. So remember, a couple of years ago, we were in the middle of Zooms and pandemics and everything, so for the first time, instead of hearing us from each department make a presentation that was intended to take five minutes and maybe lingered for 12, 13 minutes, because even I sometimes take a little bit too long to talk, we do them on video. And I think we got really good feedback from you, but it also forces us to be concise in what we talk about. And the advantage is, we can also put all those videos out on the website, so anytime, citizens can go out and find out about what's happened in the past year, and what the department heads think are important items for the year upcoming, because that helps kick off, right, the strategic planning that you all do, which kicks off the construction of our budget. And wow, it seems weird to say, the budget for 2024, that, because that budget starts on July 1 of 2023, so this is where it all starts. So that will be next week. We may have, we're still waiting for kind of one final, you know, potential approval that we would need to move forward, but there is a chance that we have a study session next week and have a presentation for you on the Waterfront Holland, the proposal from GDK. So I'm not promising that will happen, but we are preparing for that to happen. That would be the first item next week, Wednesday at 6:00. If that goes as planned, we would propose that that might, for presentation purposes and maybe size of audience and everything, that we'd probably have you, I know in a study session, we like to be upstairs in a different setting, we'd actually propose that if that goes as planned, we'd probably have you here for first portion of the meeting on Waterfront Holland, and then that we'd pivot and have the videos, we'd probably go back upstairs and kind of settle into that routine, have a break in between. And then a reminder that we have our retreat on January 21. We've been putting out information for you, I think there's one more piece of information CINC is going to send out in the next couple of days, but again, on Saturday morning, January 21. So busy times, it's nice to kick off a new year, and welcome to 2023. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Next item, appointments and communications from the mayor. I don't have any appointments tonight, but I've got a couple of communications. One, again, a reminder, we had a great coffee with council this evening immediately prior to the meeting. There is another opportunity at the Holland Civic Center Place at 9:00 on Saturday morning. Please come, we love to have those conversations with you, we love to hear from constituents, it gives us the opportunity to have that back and forth and that discussion, hear what you find is important. So again, 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM this Saturday, January 7, in the lobby of the Holland Civic Center Place. And the other, one other shout out, it's hard to believe based on the weather we've had for the last week, but we had a blizzard here just before Christmas time, and I had the honor and the privilege of being interviewed by the Weather Channel on Thursday afternoon when the weather was still nice, and they asked me about how we handle things like storms here in Holland, and talking about snow melt, and the mayor went out on a limb, and I said, we're good at this stuff, we handle this stuff really well, we've got a plan, we're going to execute it, we're going to, we're going to do the main roads first, then we're going to head to the other other roads, and folks, if it takes a little longer to get to your neighborhood, grab yourself a cup of hot chocolate and a blanket and hunker down over the holidays, and we'll make sure that we get you taken care of. I was invited to come back at 5:00 PM, but by then, the snow had had hit pretty hard, this evening. But I had the pleasure of watching the Weather Channel throughout the weekend in Holland, Michigan, reporting the storm and getting reports of plowed roads and snowmelt, almost able to keep up with the snow that was there. And by the time Sunday and Monday rolled around, snowmelt had actually caught up downtown and talked with the Weather Channel folks. They were still in the area on Sunday and in, on Monday by the time they could fly out. And they said, this was actually one of the worst blizzards they had ever seen and had ever witnessed and, and gone through. And we handled it incredibly well here in Holland. So kudos to city staff, to the transportation department. I know I was downtown some very early mornings at the Civic Center, and they already had it plowed out at 6 o'clock in the morning. They'd been out there for hours, generally starting about 3 o'clock in the morning. They did a stellar, stellar job. Thank you for all of that hard work. I know that it's a lot of hours, it's difficult weather, but it kept everything running, and even my, my in-laws who live in Freedom Village were able to drive on Christmas morning to see their grandchildren on roads that were plowed very well in the city of Holland, which, and that's an awful lot. So thank you for that. And that is all that I have this evening. Next item is appointments, motions, and communications from council members, and Mr. Corbin, I believe that you do have an appointment this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please accept the reappointment of Derek Dernum, oh, Donlin, excuse me, to the Teen Court Advisory Board for his third full term, said, said full term expiring January 3, 2025.
Is there a motion to that effect? Moved by Hookstra. Is there support? Support by Byrd. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Any other motions, communications from council members? Mr. Corbin?
Yeah, just one quick thing. Remember, your evaluations of council are due January 12. Please get those to our consultant when you can. And then also take the opportunity to look over our governance structure, our board rules, and if you have any comments or suggestions to make any changes, please do so at that time, so we can have some discussions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Ms. Freeman, I believe you've got something.
Yeah, another way that we really serve people well in this community is how we respond to the people who are most in need. And during the storm, it was, people were nervous and scared about the, about the folks who are living on sheltered, and as usual, nonprofit organizations and for-profits, thanks to the police department as well, for stepping up and really coordinating and responding to the needs of the folks who are living in tents around the community. So thanks to the police department, Community Action House, Gateway Mission, Lifeline Ministries, and a number of organizations who really work together to make sure that people are safe during the storm.
Thank you. Any other appointments, motions, or communications from council members? Mr. Freeman?
Just say, kudos to the staff at the Civic Center. We rented that facility through a group of our friends for New Year's Eve and hosted a huge New Year's Eve party, kind of open invitation, and it was absolutely awesome to have a band and DJ and food and everything that took place that evening in a great facility. And so, number one, thanks to the staff that make that happen. Number two, a big commercial, use the facility.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Peters?
I was interested to hear Mr. Zylstra's comments about his experience at the county on Tuesday, yesterday. One of the benefits of having a leg that I'm supposed to not be walking on for a while is I have been watching every stupid movie I've ever seen in my life. I don't sit well. But I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to take five hours and 30 minutes to watch what unfolded in the county yesterday. He hides it well, but he was shook, and I can tell you why. That was not, we all sensed that there was, what's going to happen? How is this going to affect us? It was, I think, it, it, a meeting that was almost hijacked. They did a lot of things yesterday, but one of them, let me just read a couple of things from one of their, the reasons that they cited in their resolution as it pertains to the DEI efforts, of which we are vitally, are responsible for the vast majority of the strategy and what we're doing with DEI in the city of Holland. Whereas Ottawa County's current vision statement of where you belong was used to establish the DEI department on the premise that county residents' characteristics of being 90% white and largely conservative were problematic for businesses. Whereas the vision statement of where you belong has been used to promote divisive Marxist ideology of the race, race equity movement in coordination with Race Forward, GARE, which we are involved in, to the employees and the people of Ottawa County, including the promotion of GARE members to local government bodies and townships and cities, meaning they want to terminate the county's ability to contact and to be involved with the other municipalities in Ottawa County to promote diversity and equity inclusion efforts that we have spent a year engaged in. Whereas Race Forward and GARE promotes the tenants of the race equality movement and critical race theory, which divide people by race as oppressed or oppressors based on skin color, asserting the theory as intersectionality, which teaches the oppressor traits, including being white, Christian, male, heterosexual, and cisgendered. And whereas many Ottawa County job listings include DEI statements and that applicants whose work can align with this value are encouraged to apply, implying agreement with the DEI department is a condition of county employment. Whereas race equity teaches, teachings seek to replace the American value of equity with the socialist value of equality. Equality promotes, equality promises equal outcomes and is not a human right. Equality ignores the impact, the impact of personal effort while dismantling the foundation of our society, which is made of our nation, which has made our nation exceptional. Equality jeopardizes liberty. Whereas race equity teachings promote a worldview which divides people according to perceived forms of oppression and are a Marxist tool aimed at reducing personal agency, deconstructing American institutions, and promoting socialism and/or communism. And whereas we love the people and children of our county, we oppose teachings that divide and that teach people to hate America and doubt the goodness of our people. We have promotes, we oppose promotion of race equality teachings through government policy, employment, employee training, government schools. We seek to restore Ottawa County to its first responsibility of protecting the constitutional rights of people and need a vision statement which reflects Ottawa County's ideal or ultimate goal. Whereas we affirm where freedom rings, where individual freedoms, parental rights, and freedom of religion and conscience are protected, all people belong. And whereas we're welcome to work, worship, and raise our family in Ottawa County. Now, albeit resolved, the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners dissolves the DEI department effective immediately, and that employment of employees within the DEI department is terminated effective immediately. It's a funny thing with diversity in Ottawa County. I was, one of my criticisms of tying our anchor to those efforts are Ottawa County's diversity is different, different parts of the county have different problems. Grand Haven, Spring Lake, Georgetown Township, Genesee, Coopersville, Allendale have a different problem with diversity. They don't have any. Most of the diversity in Ottawa County resides within Holland and Holland Township. I remind you that 30% of our city is not white. The second largest city in the state of Michigan per capita with the Hispanic population we have. I'm wondering what they think about what's being plastered all over the website right now and people responding to this. And I'm wondering about what's our response to this. We've invested a lot of time and efforts and basically had the county say, we're taking another direction. In fact, we think it's bad, and we're not going to help you with this anymore. So I guess my point of the comment is, we're about to go into a retreat. And I think, I hope, that a fair amount of that time is going to be dedicated to the citizens of this town and the great diversity that we have, and make very sure that this is not lost on us, that we're going to find a way to make sure that we don't follow the county, we don't take their lead. In fact, we're not in favor of what they're doing, and make a very strong statement that we are, in fact, not just saying all one Holland and we get to live here, but in fact, we mean it. And this is going to be a great time to do it. This is going to blow up. I highly recommend all of you watch at least the last three hours of that meeting, and I think you'll be as shaken as Mr. Mr. Zylstra was. It's a, it's a travesty, and somebody's got to take the lead here. And if it isn't us, who? When it comes to diversity demonstrating to this community, as diverse as it is, and the rapidly changing diversity that we have, and the statistics that I have and want to share at our department, that by the time 2:50, there will be more Hispanic people living in this town than there are white people. So. I wouldn't take this lightly. I don't want anybody listening to this to think that this is not a very dire situation for the city of Holland in our efforts. I certainly am not going to take this lightly. I can't speak for this body, but I have a strong feeling that this, too, is going to be, when you have time to update yourself, if you haven't already, on not just what they said, but the way they said it. It's a scary thing. And I think we've got to take, we've got to spend some serious time dedicated to the, to the diversity that we have and let them know that this is not acceptable, and we're not going to stand for it, and we're here. We're here. We mean it. The things we say, we mean. And I, I hope, I would encourage Mr. City Manager, if you at all, to carve out some time to really take some time and, and look at what's happened here and where we're going to go and how we're going to lead and how we're going to provide a blanket of security and safety to the people who live here. Thank you.
Any other appointments, motions, communications from council members? Seeing none, there is just one motion that I would accept at this time.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Freeman. Is there support? Support by Peters? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.